Hello. My name is Leslie Cullum and along with Cory Wells, I am co-president of the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. And I would like to take this opportunity to welcome you to these candidate forums, sponsored by the League in partnership with Murfreesboro City TV and the Murfreesboro City Cable Commission. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent way for voters to become more familiar with candidates and their positions. We appreciate the support of the city of Murfreesboro, including the Cable Commission, Communications Director Alan Bozeman and his staff. Their work enables broadcasting and streaming of the forums to reach a much larger number of voters. The League seeks to conduct the forums in a fair and unbiased manner, which does not favor any particular candidate or political party. Key participants, especially the moderator, are not publicly aligned with any candidate. We are pleased to have Dr. Abigail Gauthreau as moderator for these forums. Dr. Gauthreau is a research fellow with the Center for Historic Preservation at Middle Tennessee State University, and her interests include civil rights, the Voting Rights Act, and community projects to preserve and share cultural heritage. In the August election, you will be voting for candidates who will serve in a variety of roles. We invited all the candidates running in contested general races to participate, and due to the importance of the office, we also invited all the city council candidates to participate, even though they are running unopposed. You will hear from the candidates in the races in which the majority of those running were able to participate. We hope you find these forums useful in deciding which candidates you choose to support. Your vote gives you a great opportunity to influence how government is conducted in Murfreesboro. Please make your decision known by voting. Watching world events makes us appreciate our democracy and how vital citizen participation is. Thank you for joining us, and remember, your vote counts.
Good evening. I'm Abigail Gauthreau, and I will serve as the moderator for this candidate forum. This forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, and the Murfreesboro City Cable Commission. It is my pleasure to welcome both our audience here at City Hall and our viewers at home to our program. In this forum, we are hearing remarks from the candidates from Murfreesboro City Council. Before introducing the candidates, I would like to outline the procedure for the forum. Each candidate will be asked to make an opening statement and answer the first question in a period of time not exceeding five minutes. When both candidates have completed the opening statement and first question, then several additional questions will be asked. The candidates will respond to each of those questions in a period of time not to exceed three minutes. The candidates will then be allowed up to five minutes to answer the last question and make any closing remarks. I will begin by introducing the candidates. They are both seeking election to a position that is important to the citizens of Murfreesboro. I want to thank them for their gracious acceptance of our invitation to participate in this event. Speaking first is Bill Shacklet. Mr. Shacklet, you may make your opening statement and answer the following question. Why are you running for city council? You will have up to five minutes to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Gauthreau. Well, first, I want to thank League of Women Voters, City Channel, and all those that made this forum possible. You know, the first step to improve and have a better government is a better-informed electorate. And this process of having these forums help us understand who is running for office and their vision for our community, and I want to thank them for providing this opportunity for our citizens and for the voters. My name is Bill Shacklet. I may have not known, I was actually born in Twin Falls, Idaho. That was the home of my mother, and in the third grade, we moved back here to Murfreesboro, to the home of my dad. My family's been a longtime history in our community. Our family's business is over 75 years old. Actually began working in the family business when I was in the third grade. I'm married to my wife, the love of my life, for 36 years, going to be 37, I think. And got a daughter, two daughters, one who is a seminary student in Atlanta, and another daughter who lives in Chattanooga and works for a medical software company. We've been very active in our community. Rita is the director of Lineball Public Library System here in our community. We began working in young people's programs, serving our community, when we were very young in the church. We had two programs that we worked in. One was called Coffee House Ministry, called Salt Shaker, that worked with junior high and high school kids on Friday and Saturday night. And then we started a program that was a little broader community base called Dry Dock that provided a safe place for kids to go on Friday and Saturday night. I've worked with young people in a variety of settings. Been PTO president at two schools in our community, coached the league baseball for over 40 years now. Been active in, been chapter chairman of our Red Cross, Main Street Program, Downtime Business Association, been very active in the community, trying to make our community a better place. And the reason that I'm running for this position again, I served 2002 to 2006 as your city councilman, left council for eight years, and came back on a year and a half ago, and have really enjoyed coming back on, found a passion. I thought that passion for community, for the city council, had left me, but the last year and a half has really ignited my enthusiasm for what's going on in our community. This is an exciting time to be a part of decision-making in our community. And my passion has always been to connect government with the people it serves. I served as an election official for 30 years before I ever ran for public office, because I felt the voting process was so important, and the integrity of the voting process was extremely important. But now, as an elected official, it still is important that the public and the government that it serves, as we make the right decisions, that we engage the public in understanding the complexities of the issues that elicit and solicit the opinions of our public to make the right decision. Because, quite honestly, I don't care how good the seven people that sit in these seats are, and how intelligent they are, they do not have all the answers. So it's imperative that we seek the public's input in that process to make the right decision. It is my hope to continue to do that over the years of involvement in the community, have lots of relationships that, from a variety of strata of our society, from the very rich to the very meager individuals, those people that would be considered power in our community, and those people that are powerless. And I think my ability to listen to folks, to truly understand and try to find out what their opinions are, has helped me to be a better councilman, and I hope to be able to continue to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Shacklet. Next, we have Mr. Kurt Wade. Mr. Wade, you make your opening statement and answer the following question. Why are you running for city council? And you have five minutes.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having me today. And I want to say, 10 years ago, we moved to Murfreesboro from Jacksonville, Florida. My wife said, "I want to move to Murfreesboro, Tennessee." And I said, "Really?" And she says, "Yeah." So we flew into Murfreesboro, and I said, "Wow, I'm not really sure I want to live in Murfreesboro." And she says, "Well, you go get your own realtor, and you go look for another place." I went to another little certain town that's really close to us, that's really thriving. And I came back, and I told my wife, I said, "What'd you say about Murfreesboro, Tennessee? It's a great place to live, great place to raise family. That's why we're living here now. That's one of the reasons I'm running for city council." I've been involved in the community ever since we moved here. I've sit on the board of directors for the chamber, I sit on Historic Zoning Committee, the Planning Commission for the city. So that's one reason that I've chose to run for city council. The other reason is, Murfreesboro's a great place. I want to see it continue to grow. We need good people making good choices and good opportunity for people. We need more housing downtown, we need more jobs, we need more white-collar jobs. So as we look to continue to grow, I want to be part of that plan to make sure that we're growing in the right direction, we're doing the right things, and what's best for Murfreesboro.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. We will now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Mr. Wade. How should the city council determine its priorities if all of its goals can't be reached? And you, of course, have three minutes.
I think the priority is, as a city council and as a body, I think one of the things that they do, and they've started, is, one of the ways is retreat, understanding what's going on and looking at the overall, big picture of what's good for Murfreesboro. The other is, we also have a 2030, Murfreesboro 2035 Plan that I currently sit on, looking at the forecasting the next 10 to 20, 30 years down the road. And as we continue to look down the road, we're also looking at what's best for Murfreesboro within the next five to 10 years. And I see that as an opportunity, as a plan, as something on paper to really guide us in the future. And I think that's what's going to keep us on track, and also just being able to see what's going on in our community. That's really what keeps us focused, and what would keep the council focused as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Mr. Shacklet, in your opinion, what are the biggest challenges facing the city of Murfreesboro?
Well, the biggest challenge, it seems like whenever I've run for office, the biggest challenge has been growth. I mean, we live in a very prosperous community, a very attractive community. One thing I didn't mention in my background was, I actually went to MTSU and graduated with an urban planning degree, and something was seated in my brain back then, and fortunately, it stayed there. A failure to plan is a plan to fail. And in setting priorities, we have certain budgetary constraints. Dollars always, whether it's an individual's budget or the city's budget, dollars impact that priority. So you have to say, what can we do, and what must we do? And those priorities have to be set by, you know, through staff's opinions. The department heads know what they make a plan, and then they submit those budget requests to our city manager, and then they come to us as the city council to make that decision. And it always, it's been very fortunate now to not have a tax increase for 18 years. It's amazing, an amazing figure, that we haven't had a tax increase for a long period of time. But the issue is always going to be before us, that the stress on infrastructure because of our growth. And I think we have to continue to be solicit opinions as to innovative ways to approach the, and cost-effective ways to approach. One of the issues that is looming on the horizon is solid waste, and we've got some really creative minds working together, collaborating with other communities and with other government agencies, our county government, to try to address that problem. So, you know, those issues are going to continue to be there, and setting priorities are going to be a difficult task, but it's an ongoing task, one in respectful dialogue and in soliciting of all the information and all the facts. We can set priorities in the long run and learn to do that, and I think our council does a pretty good job of doing that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shacklet. We will now turn to our next question. The question will first be answered by Mr. Shacklet. Do you think that Murfreesboro should retain its at-large city council system or move to a district representation system?
Shocking question. We never get that one. Let me, let me give you a little, I can tell you, the last time I ran for council and actually dropped out of the race, in the middle of the race, because I thought it was going to be addressed, I ran because I thought this was what I thought needed to come before us. There is a charter provision that allows for this to be brought before, in a petition form, brought before the council. And my understanding is that that's being worked out with the citizens that are compassionate and passionate about that, that issue about district representation. So if that petition comes before council, then I think we're, it would be incumbent upon us, it would demand us to provide a election, a referendum. Now, there's, behind that question, there's another question in my mind. Behind that question is, how are we going to have effective representation? And I'm not sure, I've come to the conclusion, in really researching this and thinking about this, that I'm not sure numbers or location guarantee effective representation. I don't necessarily agree with my neighbors that are right next door to me. And just because we live on a certain side of town or in a particular district doesn't necessarily guarantee a quality representation. What I would ask you to do, as you look at people to represent you, is to look at people who have a heart of compassion, willing to listen to differences of opinion, that you have someone with intelligence to be able to discern and analyze facts, and then the energy to represent and to do the job of, that is truly finding the best interest. Because, quite honestly, as an elected official, you cannot discern the will of 130,000 people. It's impossible to say that's the will. You have to make your own evaluation, open yourself to the input of different people, and then make a judgment as to what is in the best interest of the citizens you represent. And I think that can be done with a seven council, seven-member city council. But if that comes before us, then we would be incumbent on providing a referendum for our citizens to consider district representation. This is not an easy question. It's a difficult question, but we need to talk about it, and I guess we need to talk about it every election, because every election I've been in, it's been a question.
Thank you, Mr. Shacklet. Mr. Wade, do you think Murfreesboro should retain its at-large city council or move to a district representation system?
I think the formal council forum that we have now is really good for what the growth for our city. As we continue to grow, I think there's an opportunity that we can look at districts, but as far as right now, I think this is, this is running pretty good, but just like Mr. Shacklet stated, you know, if it comes before the council, this is something that we must look at. I think also, too, we have to look at other cities that have districts and see how their cities develop, and then look at ours and pit what is best for our city. A lot of times, we make rational decisions, just because somebody else is doing it, that's the best way. But also, we see our council has done a really good job, our seven-man council, as is. So therefore, I think it's something that we can look at. I can't say yes or no, I think it's something that we can look at down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. We now turn to our next question. That question will be answered first by Mr. Wade. What do you consider the main responsibilities of a city council member?
I think for me is, basically overseeing the city and the direction of the city. And that's also defining with growth, how our city looks, the image of our city. We want our city to be special. We, you know, everybody has really a special place in, about Murfreesboro in their heart. But I think what happens is, as us as city councilmen, we have to look and see, every time we look at growth, we look at every subdivision we do, whether residential, we look at what's best for our city. So I think sometimes, we just look at our, look at the big picture, seeing what's best for the city of Murfreesboro, and also, we're not always going to make decisions to please everyone. I think that's what people get in, we get into pleasing people. We got to do what's best for Murfreesboro.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Mr. Shacklet, what do you consider to be the main responsibilities of a city council member?
Well, the main responsibility, I think, is to be a person of integrity, to let your thoughts, your minds, the work that you do, reflect what is best for our community. And it requires, what I said before, I think it requires you to have compassion, you have to be able to be receptive to listening to people that maybe disagree with you, be willing and open to listening to differences of opinion, and not cut people off or think that you have all the answers. I think some of the best answers to difficult questions that I've come across in doing this job is, have come from the public. When somebody has brought me an idea, and maybe 90% of what they said I disagreed with, but that 10% kernel was something that needed to be brought to the deliberative process. And so you take that 10%, and you bring it to the deliberative process, and it actually changes the decision. But if you'd never listened to that person because of the 90% that you disagreed with, you wouldn't have, you ever had that impact the decision. So I think being open to listening to people, having a compassionate heart to those that are in need in our community, being available to people, make yourself available to all people in our community, not just those that are, quote, influential. Make yourself available to all people. And then have energy, the energy to do the job. You can sit back here and do nothing. You can basically I-I everything and do no independent research. You can rely completely on the staff to give you all the information you have. Or you can choose to take the facts that they give you, lead you to a whole other strain, a whole other stream of information that might help make the best decision. And if you have the energy for the job, you have the passion for the job, and you have the intelligence for the job, then you can do the job of a city council. And let me tell you, there's lots of people out there that could have, and maybe even should have run. You know, I was, I'll be honest with you, there's one side of me, and when we didn't have a contested race, I was excited, because I knew I didn't have to put up signs, but the other side of me said, "Doggone." The process of a contested race actually brings some issues to forefront, and that's why I'm here tonight, is to at least talk about some of these issues, so the public has a chance to listen to the other, to the issues that are before us as a city council. And that's an important process to take place every time we have an election, that issues are brought forward, and realize that you're not necessarily going to agree on everything. But participating in the process makes us a better community, it makes our council a better council. So those of you that didn't run this last time, might want to consider next time. Are you preparing yourself to run for city council in the next election?
Thank you, Mr. Shacklet. We will now turn to our next question. That question will be answered first by Mr. Shacklet. In your opinion, what are currently the greatest strengths and greatest weaknesses of the city of Murfreesboro?
Well, we talked about them in a statement before. Growth is, it's a two-edged sword. It cuts one way, and, you know, prosperous, it brings prosperity to our community, it brings opportunity to our community. But on the other side, the other side of the knife, it challenges us to provide the infrastructure, the roads, the schools, the amenities of our community. It also challenges us, many of you out there remember, our community being a lot smaller. I remember when MTSU had 10,000 students, and our community was 35,000 people. And, you know, we spent the day on the square, and we had to go to a restaurant in Nashville if we wanted to go to a fine restaurant. We had to drive all the way to Nashville to go to a fine restaurant. Well, those amenities to our community are in our community now. If you didn't want to leave Murfreesboro, you didn't ever have to leave Murfreesboro now. But yet, we have to deal with the traffic, we have to deal with, you know, the imposition of all the other things that put stress on our infrastructure, that building schools and building roads and more recreational facilities and all the other things. So the challenges are that our growth and the great opportunity that we have, we live in, you know, one thing, whether we're Democrat, Republican, liberal, or conservative, one thing I think this community and everybody in it will agree on, we live in a special place. We live in a special place that provides a great quality of life to our families. And if that can bind us together to find solutions to the problems that face us going forward, then I would hope that would be something that we look for. What is, those things that would, we would find common ground in growing and addressing these problems, so that we can have creative solutions to the problems that face us. But I think those are the two things. You know, growth is a, is a challenge to, I mean, it's a good thing to have, but it's also a challenging thing to have.
Thank you, Mr. Shacklet. Mr. Wade, in your opinion, what are currently the greatest strengths and greatest weaknesses of the city of Murfreesboro?
I think the strength is, we live in a great city, and we just got to get used to the change of the infrastructure, with the growth, traffic, schools, housing, land issues. I think those are good things, problems to have. Some people don't have those problems, and they wish they had those problems, and we have those problems, but we've just got to come up with the right solution. You know, we've got to study how we do traffic. You know, when we build things, we've got to look at our road systems before we build them. I mean, same thing with housing. When we start throwing in subdivisions, hey, we need to look at the infrastructure of the roads before we put that subdivision there. So those are good things to have. And I think we, as we continue to grow, and as we look as a body, we're going to be looking at how we can improve the infrastructure, traffic. We're always going to be building schools, as long as we continue to grow, more housing downtown. You get more housing downtown, you get more people walking downtown, you get more people living downtown, walking to restaurants. Puckett Restaurant is a home run for our community. And I think that's the next thing to take off, is downtown to be more vibrant. You know, most cities that are very vibrant right now have a vibrant downtown. So that's what I'm looking for, as one of the main things for our downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. We'll now turn to our final question. I'd like to remind both of the candidates that they will have up to five minutes to respond to this question and make any closing remarks. And we'll start with Mr. Wade. What would you like to accomplish during your term in office?
I think one of the things I've said throughout tonight is, I want to see a vibrant downtown. As I travel, I see that most cities that have a vibrant downtown are really thriving. We have a city that's thriving, but our downtown is not thriving. I want to see nightlife, I want to see things happening downtown throughout the week. People can come, eat downtown, they can walk, we can take our kids downtown. We have great amenities downtown, but we have to change what we're doing. We have to change the zoning to allow developers to come downtown, to put more housing. And I think if we can do those things, that really changes the dynamic of our city. Our city's grown outward, and now it's time for our city to grow inward. We have great parks downtown that we don't utilize as we should. So I think, I think one of the focuses is our downtown, maintaining our traffic. We've got to really work on with our state representatives, our senators, on our road system here in our city. We're getting congested, and, but we've got to work together with the county as well to make sure we ratify those things. But the downtown is really, is the focus, to make it better and more people live in downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. And Mr. Shacklet, what would you like to accomplish during your term in office and any final closing remarks?
Well, one of my, ever since I first ran for office, the driving force for me, running for city council initially, was to address what I thought is the biggest challenge to our, not just our local government, but to government at every level. There is a, a dangerous complacency, a dangerous apathy that exists in our citizenry, that drives us to extremes in trying to find solutions to problems. And if we continue to ignore the fact that we will not solve our problems in our little huddles of people that think just like us, or act or look just like us. We exist in a community, and we can begin to flesh that out here in Murfreesboro. In fact, that effort's already begun. There are groups meeting to understand each other, to listen to each other, and to solve the problem of self-government. It is a problem to learn how to communicate in a respectful dialogue with each other as we seek answers to difficult problems. Local government's only function is to provide services to its citizen, and its citizens evaluate that its effectiveness at the ballot box when you get a chance to vote. You convey the trust that you have in the people that you vote for. And I challenge our citizens of Murfreesboro to commit themselves to better government at all levels by being better informed as to what government is doing. Don't just simply elect somebody because they appeal to your lowest level of thought. "I'm mad, and I'm going to make it happen." Vote for people that truly can, will commit themselves Vote for people that truly can, will commit themselves to working with people to find answers, to serve people, so that we can have government for the people, by the people, government that functions better. It has been my hope, my passion and my desire, ever since I was first elected, to be a part of the solution and not a part of the problem. It's time that we step up and cast a vote. Don't sit on the sidelines. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Vote. And when you step in that voting booth, you're not a Democrat or a Republican, you're not a liberal or conservative. But the future of our city, the future of our community, the future of our state and our nation is in your hands. Think carefully and decide who can most effectively bring our city, our state, and our country That's how we're going to solve the problems that we face. I don't know what those problems are. None of us do. But it's in the heart of responsible people that are worthy of our trust, that we can find answers to whatever problems, whatever challenges face us. Realize not just the challenge, but the opportunity you have to vote. Each day, give thanks for that, because not everybody in this world has that opportunity. But as citizens of this great state, this beautiful country, and this wonderful city, you have that right. I encourage you to exercise that vote in the next election and in every election to come. And compel those people that are in your sphere of influence, your family and your friends, compel them to vote as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shacklet. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, of Murfreesboro Cable and Murfreesboro Cable Commission, I would like to thank all of the candidates for their participation today. I also want to recognize Alan Bozeman, Communications Director for the City of Murfreesboro, and the Murfreesboro Cable Commission for their cooperation in presenting this program on Comcast Channel 3, AT&amp;T Channel 9, and making it available on the city website. I want to encourage all Murfreesboro citizens to vote. Early voting began July 15th and goes through July 30th. Election Day is August 4th. Please exercise this important right of citizenship. May we close with a round of applause for the candidates.